Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, February 24th, 2020. Before we have tonight's roll call, I'd like to remind anyone who's in the audience who would like to speak to any item on the agenda, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda, to kindly fill out a speaker request form. They're in the hallway, in the foyer, behind this meeting room. Give that speaker request form to Lynn Physikas, our city clerk. Lynn will get those up to me, and we will try to get you on in the proper order. If you'd like to speak early on and not wait until the item on the agenda that you want to speak on, if you'd prefer to do that, you can speak under Item D on the Agenda, Public Participation. If you would prefer, you're more than welcome to wait till we get to that item on the agenda, at which time you'll have your opportunity to speak to that item. So with that being said, I'd like to call City Clerk Physikas. Call on City Clerk Physikas to have the roll call, please.
Morris.
Here.
Fanouken.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Over the years, the city of DeKalb has been very fortunate to have the services of interns from Northern Illinois University, many of whom are in the public administration program at Northern. Tonight, we will have a presentation on the census, and one of our interns has been very integral in forming of the Complete Count Committee. And as we move forward to the administration of the 2020 census in our country, he has been very, very much a part of that team. That team will be introduced a little bit later on. But to acknowledge the fact that we've had so many good interns, some at the airport, some at HR, some in the city manager's office, I'd like to welcome a gentleman to lead the pledge of allegiance. His name is Adam Grubbs. He's a local DeKalb boy. He's working in our city manager's office and has been very, very hard at work on the 2020 census. So if Adam Grubbs, if you would come up, please, and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Yeah, me too. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Adam, and thanks for all you're doing for us here as an intern for the city of DeKalb. Item C on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Morris. Discussion, none. Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Tonight's agenda is approved as printed. Now, Item D, Public Participation. This is a place in the program where anyone who would like to speak to any item, whether or not they have indicated a particular place on the agenda, can speak. Again, if you prefer, you can wait until we get to that item on the agenda. Fill out a speaker request form, give that to our city clerk Lynn Physikas, and we'll get you on. We do have a couple folks who would like to speak under this particular portion of our agenda. The first one is a tag team, Paul Borick and Cohen Barnes, please.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. We're from the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, located on 2179 Sycamore Road in DeKalb. On behalf of the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, I want to thank the city of DeKalb on the attraction of the Farrara Candy Company's 1.6 million square foot distribution and packaging center to the Chicago West Business Center in DeKalb. We want to express sincere appreciation to Mayor Jerry Smith, the DeKalb City Council, city manager Bill Nicholas, and city staff for your efforts to expedite planning, permitting, and development, and for leading the DeKalb taxing bodies in approving prudent incentives that will attract a $100 million investment, provide 500 jobs, and generate increased tax revenue for many years to come. We commend the DeKalb Community Unit School District 428, DeKalb County Government, DeKalb Forest Preserve District, DeKalb Park District, DeKalb Public Library, DeKalb Township, Kishawaki Community College, and Kishawaki Water Reclamation District for partnering with the city of DeKalb in the IGA to recruit the Farrara project. The city's leadership and participation in the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone, together with DeKalb County and other municipalities and taxing bodies, leverages valuable state enterprise zone incentives that contributed to the attraction of Farrara to DeKalb County and retention in the state of Illinois. The city of DeKalb's collaboration with Representatives Jeff Keiker and Tom Demmer and the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity secured much-needed financial resources for roadway and intersection improvements to serve this massive industrial complex. This is the kind of home run we all envisioned for the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone when it was created a couple years ago. And we appreciate the city of DeKalb's significant contributions to this achievement. Come on.
One of the hats I wear is as president of the DCDC, and Paul and I just, like you said, just wanted to come out and say, "Thank you." I really hope there are high fives all around when we actually close this deal, because this is just transformational for DeKalb, absolutely. So I wanted to commend you on your leadership for seeing this through. I wanted to commend you on the support that you gave city manager Nicholas to work really hard, which he did. I know you realize that, but that man spent a lot of time on this, as well as Paul Borick and the staff of DCDC. So just wanted to thank you for your support of DCDC. Thank you for this project, and as a taxpayer, as a businessman, thank you, thank you, thank you. And we all know the projects that are still out there and still to come, so I look forward to, as DCDC, working with the city of DeKalb, to drag a few more of those across the finish line. So nice job, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you, Cohen. I appreciate those remarks. We have one other person who has indicated they'd like to speak at this point, and that is Jim Mason.
Your Honor, I will sit around now with consideration. You call me consideration.
You're going to wait until we get to that item on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good, thanks. Okay, does anyone at this point care to speak to any item on the agenda or not on the agenda? If not, thank you very much. We'll move along now to presentations, and we have three presentations this evening. The first one, I proudly present the director of the DeKalb Municipal Band, Kirk Lundbeck, who is getting ready for the 2020 season, and tonight he's going to give us a little report on the 2019 year as part of the annual report, and perhaps he'll give us a sneak preview as to what's up in 2020. Kirk, nice to see you.
Mayor, I thought you said I could have the next two hours to talk about the seasons that were previous to the 19... No, I'm kidding. You all received my report. Do you have any questions for me before I go over some highlights? I must have gave you a good report then. I guess the biggest thing is that, you know, we've had an awful lot of support from our community, which has made a big difference in our organization and has allowed us to continue to do our 12 concerts per season. And in tune with that, as I get into 2020, we've added an additional concert and maybe another one, too, because of that. Your support is, of course, definitely needed and thanked from everybody in the band and the community, because we are an icon of this community, a musical treasure, and a really good cultural event every Tuesday night all summer long, and we love doing it, and we continue to appreciate it as a community. Last year, there was a couple interesting highlights that I want to share with you. One is, we did a stargazing event in one of our concerts in July, where we had the STEM group come out and do some stargazing with telescopes, and it was great. We had a large audience that night, over 800 people were there. And I also got the Fox Valley Star Wars troupe to come out and dress in full costume. We had Chewbacca, we had Darth Vader, we had storm troopers. They came out to the concert. I learned a valuable lesson, though. We opened the program with Star Wars, the main theme from Star Wars. It's seven minutes long, directly from the movie, right by John Williams, not a watered-down version, and I was handed a three-pound lightsaber, and I conducted the whole piece with that, and my right arm is now longer than my left because of that. And I won't do that again, trust me, because the rest of the concert was really hard. But it's okay to lift a three-pound weight, but you do it for seven minutes waving it around like I do crazily. It was kind of difficult. Another one that we do every year is our children's concert. And our children's concert has become a really big draw for families, so much so that not only do we introduce our music to the younger generation, as our generation gets older, our mainstays that have been coming to concerts for years and years and years and years start to fade away due to age. It's nice to bring new blood there, but also families come. And families that came to our children's concert this year ended up coming to every concert for the remainder of the season, so that program's working really well, and we will continue that. But again, the support that we have from the community, as well as you, is what's made the difference and to help us to keep going. In 2020, we're starting something, I've been working with collaborative efforts with other community leaders and trying to get the band out, to showcase the band and the wonderful band that DeKalb has in other communities and in other organizations. And one of them is, we're doing a spring concert this year, something that we've never done before. We are doing a joint concert at NIU with a collaborative effort with the NIU School of Music on April 23rd at 7:30 in the concert hall. We will be sharing the concert with the NIU Wind Symphony under the direction of Thomas Boo, and I'll be conducting the DeKalb Municipal Band. We will be showcasing a little bit of what we're going to be doing this summer, and also just performing for an audience where we usually don't perform. So that's a new start for us. Also, we are working out the details, and it may not happen this year, but it will happen in the future. Once the Egyptian Theater has air conditioning in the summertime full-time, all the time, we will have a rain site for our concerts, and we will announce it soon enough so people can move from the band shell, and the band can move all our equipment over to the Egyptian Theater and hold our concerts in there, so we won't lose a concert ever again. That's another thing. Also, we're doing an offshoot, and I'm still in negotiations right now with Sycamore Park District of doing a Thursday night concert this summer in Sycamore. So spreading the musical flavor of the DeKalb Municipal Band into Sycamore. So those are some things that I've got going on this year. If you read my report at all, you'll see that the bottom of the third page to the beginning of the fourth page is, "The director's going to do this, the director's going to do that." I'm exhausted. I do an awful lot, planning the season, not only that, but going out and soliciting, fundraising for the band. And I do have a board. The board is not as active as I'd like it to be, and so I'll be in search of new people to come onboard of our board, keeping our existing but adding some more, outside of the musician aspect, but looking at financials, also looking at another fundraising aspects and grant writing, all of which I've been doing myself. And I like to pass the buck a little bit, because I'm doing a lot of other stuff that I need to do. I'm doing a lot of public speaking right now. I also had the luxury of teaching a two-hour seminar to the Lifelong Learning Institute this spring. Mr. Mayor was there, and he heard me talk about the history of the band and also what we have going. So it's going to be an outstanding season again for the people of DeKalb and surrounding communities, and I look forward to starting my 45th year in the band, and this will be my eighth year as the conductor. Do you have any questions for me?
I have no questions, Kirk. I would just like to make a couple of comments, if I may. First of all, thank you for your service throughout the years. The band is something that we can be so proud of. If anyone wants what I would consider a very, very complete report on the band's activities in 2019, I'd encourage you to go to the website for tonight's meeting and looking at some of the background material. It's very, very complete.
Thank you.
And I commend you, Kirk, on the job you're doing, and we look forward to the 2020 season, and the band plays on, correct?
You got it, we will.
You got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, our next report. Coming to the podium is our executive director of the DeKalb Public Library, Emily Faulkner, who is here to present the DeKalb Public Library FY 2019 Annual Report. Emily.
Good evening, thanks for having me. As I was listening to Kirk, I thought it was funny, because I also found myself wielding a lightsaber earlier this year at our pop con event, so that was... Yeah, last year apparently was the year of Star Wars in DeKalb. I'm going to give you a little bit of an update on where the library was in 2019 and some things that we have coming up for 2020. In 2019, the library adopted a new strategic plan and a new mission statement, which many of you assisted in giving input towards. The new mission statement is, "Enrich, Inform, Entertain, Inspire." Throughout that process, we gathered feedback from community members through online and in-person surveys, focus groups, drop-in feedback sessions, and interviews with key constituents. All that information went into creating the new strategic plan, which is in place now through 2022. Since this summer, we've been working to break the goals of the larger plan into smaller workable pieces and assign them to staff members, and we're on track to achieve... We've achieved several of the smaller ones already, and are on track to achieve the rest of them, hopefully by 2022, and we'll go through the whole process again. As you know, the library board was able to work with the city to complete an intergovernmental agreement to provide meeting space for city council meetings once you move to your new location. We hope that people enjoy coming to the library for the meetings and enjoy that it helps us fulfill our goal of helping people become more civically engaged in DeKalb. So we are working right now with the city's team to get everything set up for broadcasting, and we're looking forward to welcoming you, hopefully sometime this spring. Last year, we saw a number of wonderful partnerships between the library and community organizations. One of the ones that I'd like to point out was a lovely partnership with NIU for their 125th anniversary project. They collected oral histories, so we worked with students and professors to teach them how to use our sound studio, and then welcomed them in to complete a number of interviews with faculty, alumni, current students, and others associated with the university. If you're interested in seeing some of those final interviews, they're available both on the NIU website and in the media library on our website, which is an area that we're hoping to add new work to as people create podcasts or musical recordings that they'd like to share with the public. We've also been working closely with Basics DeKalb County, which I'm sure you've seen the signs for. They've been up at bus stops, they've been coming to a lot of events. We're trying to ensure that every child in DeKalb comes to school ready to learn, so that's a lot of focus on pre-formal education, so kids who are in pre-K and younger, trying to get them ready for kindergarten. And then with that same goal in mind of having a lifelong learning space in DeKalb, we've got a new agreement that we recently signed with DeKalb, Cortland, and Malta Libraries in District 428 that will allow us to offer library cards to every student at District 428 schools, starting in September. We're excited to be able to welcome all of our students into our libraries and work more closely with the schools to promote literacy and a love of learning. So we're in the process now of figuring out how to put that in place to offer library cards to all students at District 428. Other than that, the daily work of readers advisory, reference assistance, circulation, and programming for all ages continues to a high standard at the library. We've recently implemented a survey process for patrons to let us know if we're meeting their expectations and get feedback about how we can better serve the community. Early responses have been positive, and we've been able to add some additional programs tailored to patron requests, thanks to the survey results. So that was 2019. In 2020, we've been working with Adam and the rest of the Complete Count Team to come up with ways to get the word out about the census. We're planning a number of census-related events, including the Come to Your Census Celebration on April 1st. So we're going to have activities for all ages, information about how to participate in the census, and also help share with people what it means to DeKalb to have that information collected and how it helps fund the city, the library, and all of the things that we use in our community. We have several materials-moving projects at the library. Over this year, you're going to see that a lot of our collections move from one place to another. We're changing around the adult and teen collections to make them more accessible and easier to find things in. We're also going to transition our picture book collection. So right now, when you go in, it's in Dewey decimal order, and you look for the author, you look for the book. We're going to start moving the picture books into collections, so things that go, animals, princesses. So if any of you have small children, you know that when they get really fixated on dinosaurs, you just want all the dinosaur books. Now they're all going to be on a shelf together, so you can just grab as many dinosaur books as your kid wants. So that's coming over the course of this year. After hearing during our strategic planning process, one of the only negative comments that we heard about the library is that accessibility remains an issue. So we're working to make sure that the building is as welcoming and easy to get around as possible. Although the library does... We do meet 88 guidelines, but we've learned that there are things we could do to improve beyond the basics that we have in place. So we're in the process of applying for several grants to improve access and possibly even parking, if we can make that happen, on the east side of the building. We've also been refining and improving signage throughout the building to make it easier for people to navigate without having to come up and ask for help. So now when you walk in, you'll see that the desks are all labeled, so you don't have to ask where reference or circulation are. It makes it easier, people don't have to walk as far to get where they're going if they don't already know. Like many libraries around the nation, in 2020, we're unveiling a library of things. So in addition to books, CDs, DVDs, and things like that that we already offer, we're going to be adding some additional items that we think people would like to borrow. We're starting out with a set of internet hotspots that will be available soon to check out, and after that, plan to add STEM science kits that families can take home with them to learn different things. My favorite is the addition, thanks to a partnership grant that we wrote with the Wild Blue Ukulele Orchestra. The orchestra's been performing concerts at the library and offering a monthly strum and sing, where people can drop in to play ukulele and sing different songs. And we worked together with them on a grant, which the Farnie Wiltzer Fund just gave us, that they're going to allow us to circulate ukuleles. So we're going to have five regular and five concert ukuleles that come in kits for people who want to learn how to play the ukulele. So that'll be coming this spring, and the Wild Blue Ukulele Orchestra is going to be doing a kickoff concert to welcome the ukuleles to the library. In conclusion, it's been a very busy and fulfilling year at the DeKalb Public Library. We're gearing up for a great year in 2020 with new ideas and new ways to serve the community. As ever, I have a fantastic team working for me. Every staff member is dedicated to the ideals of a public library and invested in serving the people of DeKalb. I'd also like to thank each of you for the assistance that you've given me and the city staff has given me over the past year in, you know, helping with preparing our budget, making sure that, you know, our disaster manual is on point, doing the various agreements with the city. So that's been very helpful to not have to go it alone. Having elected officials and employees that help out with that means a lot to the library, and it does allow us to do better service for the city. So that is my report. I'm happy to answer any questions. Does anyone have anything they'd like to ask about this or the report I sent?
Are there any questions or comments on the report? Much like Kirk Lundbeck and the Municipal Band, I want to thank you, Emily, for giving a report, a very extensive report, including financials, which again are in the background information attached to tonight's agenda for this meeting. And anyone who may not have had a chance to take a look at those and are interested, please do that as a download from the agenda. So again, having seen no particular questions or comments, I thank you for your report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, once again, I'd like to mention the census, and I'm going to introduce our management analyst, Jason Blumenthal, who has spearheaded our group of Adam Grubbs and Joanne Rouse and Jason and Ray Munch in working very, very hard to assure that we count each and every person in the city of DeKalb for the 2020 census. It's critical. I know that will be part and parcel of what Jason and Adam might explain tonight. So Jason, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. We were supposed to have two individuals from the U.S. Census Bureau here this evening. They were unable to attend, but I wanted to give a brief update on what the city is doing and answer any questions you might have. In the coming weeks, you'll be seeing some advertisements on the sides of buses, on the backs of buses, as also in the interior of the buses. Some of them will be in Spanish, some will be in English, to get the best part of our communities. Other things that you've been seeing going on is social media. A key thing is, we've been creating videos. So you may see the mayor made a video talking about the census and the importance of it. The fire chief was actually just up on Saturday with the... I know, he really likes that I'm singling him out on this one, because he was thrilled about being on social media. But you'll be seeing, we're going to get some community partners and getting those videos explaining how it impacts them and why the census information is very important. Third, we are doing that Complete Count Committee, which has about 50 community partners. It might be nonprofits, other government agencies, or other community leaders. So we are working with that, and I'm going to actually completely say, this one's on Adam Grubbs. He's our management intern, as the mayor's indicated. He has spearheaded this. He has been great at communicating with all of our partners, and he's really taking ownership of it. And we really appreciate Adam and the work he's doing with that, so thank you for that. And then last, you actually may have heard, we've been making the rounds a little bit with some radio ads. Adam's been up on a couple radio stations. I joined him for one. Expect to see that in the next couple months, but it won't be just us talking, we'll get some other community partners involved. But we're making very large strides in trying to connect with every single individual in the community, and we hope to continue to do that. If you have any questions, I'm gladly able to answer.
Yes, just for the betterment of those who may not realize why the 2020 census is so important to this municipality and others, how do you answer the question? Why should I be governor?
There's two main reasons it's important. The first one would be for money distribution. $675 billion is distributed from the federal funds a year, and that per-person capital is how it's determined. So each person counted equates to about $1,535. So our municipality receives that much per person. The second thing is in regards to political representation. Each state, under reapportionment in the House of Representatives, is determined based on how many people are located within a state. Since 1950, or is it a little bit later than that? 1930, the state of Illinois has actually lost a House Representative member every single census. Right now, we're guaranteed to lose one, but we're possible to lose two if we don't have a complete and accurate count of Illinois. So that makes us lose our voice in DC and our ability to lobby and have strong needs for the state of Illinois as a whole. So that impacts us in twofold. So those would be the two reasons it's important.
Alderman Fanouken.
Just a couple other comments, if I may. You know, you mentioned the $1,535 per person. That's per annum.
Correct.
So really, over 10 years, that's over $15,000 that it impacts, just that one count. And it doesn't only affect the federal reapportionment, it also affects the state and even the local reapportionment here. When we go in 2022, go ahead and redivide the wards up. So I mean, it doesn't impact just federal elections, it impacts a lot of local elections, too. And I believe the estimate I heard on the undercount last time for DeKalb County was about 27%.
That's right.
23, I think. Yeah, I think it was 23%. 77% was completed.
So but then also, though, there's a very important, just statistical compliment, that DeKalb County needs to hit 100,000 in the census, because that makes a big difference and a lot of job reporting and other factors, too.
So yeah, when the Census Bureau pairs you up, for counties over 100,000, they get data for their entire county. If you're under that 100,000, you get paired up with the next smallest county connected to you. I don't know what that would look like for us if we get under that 100,000 threshold, but it does make data harder and, you know, firms coming in, any of your companies looking... They look at census data to determine, is this the place we want to start business and anything along those lines? So yes.
Thank you.
No problem, sir.
And all NIU students attending Northern Illinois University or in DeKalb on April 1st are counted as part and parcel of the 2020 census for the city of DeKalb. And I know you guys have been very, very, working very closely with Sherri Taylor from the local governmental studies in Northern. Lisa Freeman has made a personal commitment on trying to make sure that every student at Northern who's in this community on April 1st is counted. So I commend you guys for working very, very closely with NIU on that.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And I actually do want to commend, we've worked very closely with NIU as well as the county on this effort.
Right.
So it's been a very nice collaborative approach.
That's wonderful. Any other questions? Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your help.
I have no mayoral appointments tonight, so let's move along on the agenda to Item G, the Consent Agenda. All items on the Consent Agenda are enacted by one motion unless a council member chooses to remove one of the items from the Consent Agenda. Let me read the following items that are on our Consent Agenda this evening. Number one, minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of February 10, 2020. Number two, minutes of the regular city council meeting of February 10, 2020. Number three, accounts payable and payroll through February 24, 2020 in the amount of Number four, investment and bank balance summary through December 2019. Number five, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through December 2019. And six, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, January 2020. Unless anyone who would like to delete an item from the agenda, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any discussion? Roll call.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adai.
The consent agenda is approved as printed. Now, we have two public hearings this evening. The first one is a public hearing regarding the proposed vacation of a portion of dedicated right-of-way at John Street and Lincoln Highway. I will open this public hearing at 6:30 PM. Are there any folks who would like to speak to this item, this public hearing, on the vacation of a portion of dedicated right-of-way of John and Lincoln? If not, I'd like to have City Manager Nicholas make any comments he might deem appropriate.
I can reserve those for the ordinance later on.
Okay, very good. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to actually be asked to approve this later on. Hearing no other comments, I will close this public hearing at 6:32. Our second public hearing is a public hearing regarding a city proposal to create a special service area, 29 DeKalb Market Square. And I will open this public hearing at 6:32. If, are there any, is there anybody in the audience who are landowners or property owners in this particular DeKalb Market Square area who would like to speak to this item? We also have Bessie Chronopoulos. Would you like to speak to this item?
I've signed out.
Please.
This is the point of the word. Should you, is the other public hearing done? Is the other public hearing done?
The public hearing is closed, yes. I close that at 6:32. I open this at 6:32. That's how quickly I move along there, Bessie.
I missed it. I, getting old, mayor, getting old. Okay. Thank you for letting me speak on this one. It's time for that roadway to get repaired. There's no question. You could lose a whole house in some of those potholes, much less a vehicle. And I know that the city, and it pains me to see that the city staff has to spend so much time on this. It's a waste of taxpayers' dollars. It really is, and people should be very upset. There've been a lot of, there's been some conversation on social media and some good ideas coming forth, as some of the, Alderman, I'm sure will be able to tell you, and as others will be able to tell you. You may end up having to do this special tax situation. I'm personally not thrilled with that, and I caution you to think about this. Agreements are in place, correct, staff? No, there are agreements in place with that area as well as, as other centers. What teeth do our agreements that we spent so much time putting together over the years, what teeth do they actually have? What power do they have? Why do we even bother going through them if they're not able to be utilized to have people comply with what they should be complying with? It doesn't make any sense. It also doesn't make our, and this is not to cast any negativity on our code people or anything, but what does it say for our ability to be able to enforce codes? As many people, you know, some people had said, you know, when I've been talking to them, gosh, you know, if my grass grows X amount, I'm certainly going to be fine and I'm going to be made to comply. All in the same, you know, maybe going with the tax situation is the only choice that we may have, but if there's a way to really look into those agreements and see if there's anything that can be done, that would be the ideal choice. And then to also think about future agreements that might be made for other developments that come forth, you know, are, are those going to be put together in such a way that the city is protected and that, you know, that everybody is protected and that people who agree to something actually comply with? And the other question I had was, and again, you know, trying to protect the taxpayer, if my, it's my understanding, City Manager, that if 51% of the owners do not go along with this special assessment, then I'm not really sure, I'm unclear as to what the next step would be. Would that not mean more staff time and more legal expenses and, again, falling on the backs of the taxpayers? So, just some food to ponder. It's the agreements that I think might need some tightening up and looking into, so.
Thank you, Bessie. Any other comments? Bill, do you have anything at this point to?
Just maybe you could clear the air now, in case people aren't here for the ordinance part later, or for the later part of the, of the agenda. It's the reason, the reason we're here tonight with this public hearing is because the agreements were found wanting, and in particular, on the point of the maintenance of the roadways. And the enforcement recourse for the city has been to commit lots of staff time for code enforcement fines and, or inspections and warnings and fines and then court action, and it's not been very productive. And it's, it's a months-long process if there isn't cooperation, and there hasn't been that level of cooperation. So, what we're trying to put in place is a way to save on the staff time and the taxpayers' commitment and to have a, an automatic system in place so that, once a year, money's set aside, the work is done and, and the money comes to reimburse the city for the costs incurred. That's what a special service area is about. Now, if, so what happens tonight, as I said in the background, is that no one has been here to object, but they do have 60 days to object after this public hearing is closed. And if 51% of the owners or majority of the owners object, it's in the negative, then the special service area is not implemented, and we'll have to try to find something else. There are other options, but this would be the best of the, of the options.
Are there any other comments regarding this issue on, during this public hearing? Hearing done, I will close this public hearing at 6:38. So, we move right along to item I, considerations, demonstration of the new police-to-citizen software. I'm going to, first of all, introduce our, ask City Manager Nicholas to speak to this item, and then I guess you're going to introduce Commander Woodruff.
I will, and, and he's eager to, to walk us through this. I will caution you, as I did in my background report, that there are, on the whole, lots of people who support most features involved, but there is one feature that has attracted some attention, and that's the mapping feature. We're going to show that to you tonight and anybody else who's watching so that you would have a basis for conversation about that, and people who are here tonight may want to speak to that. So, without any further ado, I'd like to introduce Commander Woodruff, who's spent a lot of time over the last year plus several years really in trying to work with a software manufacturer to see what we can do to make this work for the city of DeKalb. Commander Woodruff.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, council. Mr. Mayor. All right, as this looks like it's working up, my mouse is a little slow, so this might be a little weird. This has been a, a project that's been numerous years in the making, as the city manager pointed out, actually built upon all of the heavy lifting done by Alderman Smith when he was with the department. And we kind of finished it up a couple of years ago and then found out that we had a problem beyond our scope that we could not fix. So, it went back to the software manufacturer, and they had to pretty much completely rebuild it. They've done so, and now we are ready to re-release it. It's really kind of built upon the three ideas of transparency from the police department, open communication. There's a couple of different ways to communicate with the police department through this, as well as information sharing, especially with both the public and with some of our partners, be it through NIU and some other areas that get our information commonly. I'm just going to kind of give you some of the highlights of the website, just test-drive it a little bit for you here. So, this is the homepage of it. Every time I look at the screen, it looks different than mine, so it's kind of throwing me off here. Three buttons that are probably going to be some of the most used, and then our third-party vendors. BikeCrash.com, it used to be that when we did accident reports, we gave you a piece of paper at the scene with all the information. Nowadays, it's all done digitally. So, you can go right here to the third-party vendor, get a copy of the insurance and the other person's information that was driving with you. Alert DeKalb is our alert system for weather reports, traffic reports, some crime reports, things like that. Those can be accessed right here. Off to the side, the Daily Bulletin. Now, this will show every case we go on that generates a case report. So, for example, we go up in a keys-and-car. That's simply a, an event that's not going to show up on here. So, all the little things that we do do not show up. Anything that is significant enough to generate a case report, so a crime, an arrest, certainly, many, many other things that we do, abandoned vehicles, all the way up to the biggest crimes there are, will all show up on here every day that we do it. There's only a couple on here because it takes a couple of days for it to get through our records. Here's from a few days ago, everything on here. I would point out that it never gives the exact address where anything occurred. It always says the 100 block. So, if something happened at 123 Main Street, it's going to say 100 Main Street. We're still trying to give out as much information as we can while still protecting privacy as best as we can as well. From this page, you can see the general idea of what we've done. If there was an arrest, sometimes, most times, it will give you an option to query that a little bit further. You can also get the case number on here. This will not release case reports. You would still need to FOIA those directly from the department. The event map, this is about a week from, from today, a week ago from today. This shows every event that the police department responded to, same thing, anything that generated a case number. So, traffic stops with a warning, not on here. Traffic stops with an arrest, they are on here. You can click on any given thing in any given area. These say three and four because there's four incidents in that particular area. If we zoomed in, they would get larger, like so. You click on that, it's making me a liar. There it is. Pops over here exactly what it was. This looks like it was probably a car accident. This is live information. Someone was trespassed right here. You can see the case number. If you wanted to know more about that, you simply FOIA the case number, and we give you the information. This can go up to 30 days at a time, and as a snapshot, I know we've often talked about two-thirds of our calls are handled in the Antiglenn North neighborhood. You can see that reflected here as well. Sycamore Road corridor has a number of calls. Lincoln Highway has a number of calls. This aid is probably the police department. That's most likely where we take a number of our calls anyway. And then up in here, in the more dense area with a lot more apartments and a lot more people, obviously, there's a lot more calls for service. Likewise, you can also see over here, and you can click right to it, it'll highlight which one it is. So, it kind of works both ways. The event search gives much of the same information as the event map, just in a different format. It's less graphical. So, here you can search by the report information. I would note that you cannot, I believe the kids call it go trolling for someone. So, if I wanted to see something, every single incident that Craig Woodruff has been involved in, you can't just type my name, it won't work. You have to have at least the general idea, the date that it occurred, and look for it in that way. It's got some more ways to try to protect privacy as best we can, but at the same time, get the information out there for people who generally need it. So, that's the report information version of it. You can do case number, and it's just the case number, and near an address. So, for example, if I wanted to check near 700 West Lincoln, Police Department, we get a number of reports that come in there. I'm checking within, every incident within a half mile within the last week. We take a number of reports, of course, that come into the police department, and this is how they would show up. 24 cases, this would work for any address in town, and there you are. So, warrants that have come in, whatever people reported, an accident, things like that. Again, no case reports come up on this. You could click on it, and it'll show you the related pin on the map, but it's going to be the police department in this case. Recent arrests, simply so, it shows the recent arrests. This goes back approximately six months. It shows the people we've most recently arrested. You'll see this 1,800 number there that's a little bit misleading because, as you tell from this gentleman, he's got three on here because he was arrested for three different calls at the same time. So, three, same guy got arrested one time, charged three different cases, shows up three times. Highlights whatever was done. This should help out the media. I know that they like to keep up on this. It's kind of a daily blotter, along with the Daily Bulletin, as well as NIU's judicial services. There, we're constant contact with them, back and forth, as they're looking after their students' needs and getting information from us and reports from us. This would help them out a great deal as well. You can report some minor incidents on here, misdemeanor theft, misdemeanor criminal damages. We have a generation that doesn't necessarily like to come to the police department or make telephone calls, so maybe it's 3:00 in the morning, and you get home, and you decide that you need to make a report about a stolen bicycle. You can come on here, click your way through, enter in all of the bicycle's information, all of your information, serial number, everything you got, whenever it is convenient for you to do so. Maybe you're at work, and you can't get 10 minutes to come into the police department, or maybe you don't need a police department, or a police officer stopped by your house. An officer will reach out to you, and one way or another, and finish that investigation and make sure everything's done right, but this is just another way to get us all of that information quickly. It benefits the resident, it also benefits the police department because we have everything, hopefully, that we need right then and there, should make everything nice, quick, and concise. We've been doing bike registrations forever. Just as a reminder, we still do them. So, if anybody gets a bicycle, come on in, register it. We'll take down the make, the model, the serial number, and things like that. Bicycles are probably one of the single most stolen items in town, so this is a great way for us to track it and get your bicycle back for you if it does get taken. We also do a lot of security watches. People sometimes forget that. If you're going down to Florida because it gets too cold, give us a call. We'll take the particulars of what's going to be on in the house, what lights, who's going to key, things like that. And we swing by, we check the house, make sure everything's locked up, make sure nothing's out of order, and if anything is, we, we give you a call. Frequently Asked Questions is really the last thing. There's not a whole lot on there. Until people start asking questions, then I can start filling that in a little bit more. And lastly is the Contact Us. We have this on our webpage now. It's simply another way to reach out to us with either a commendation, something we're doing right, some comment on the website, whatever the residents may want to speak to. I think that is the majority of what I have prepared for you, and I'm open to any questions.
Okay, there may be a few questions.
Sure.
Tonight, even though they aren't posted on Frequently Asked Questions. Let me begin by saying that we have a couple of folks who would like to speak to this item, and we'll get to you in just a moment. This software program, correct me, Craig, if I'm not mistaken, comes as a direct result of citizens' request to see more about crime and arrests, et cetera, police activity in the city of DeKalb. It's a police-to-citizen software.
Correct.
And I commend the police department for that. The first that I heard that this was going to roll out, if you will, on our website was this past week. And after having talked with our city manager, my first reaction was, don't post it yet. This is something that I think City Council needs to have dialogue on. I think it is something that we need to let the public have dialogue on. And I am not critical of any particular points of these, although I know as a result of emails that I've received and folks who have called me, there are, there are some folks who just don't see eye to eye with everything that is going to be posted on the website. So, what I'd like to do, unless the council feels otherwise, I do have a couple of comments from the public. I think we'll go ahead with that. Bill, I'd like you to make any comments that you might have, and then we'll have a dialogue, including- a dialogue, including perhaps some questions. Because I think what we're being asked tonight is to give some direction as to when we want to see this go live, if you will. Is that a fair enough analysis of where we are, from your perspective?
From mine, yes.
Yeah, I just want to say, Mayor, just to correct something you said. Actually, Tuesday night, we had a very good presentation and give and take at the DARA meeting.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
And Craig and I were there. And I brought back to you the concerns that have been raised there and recommended that we not go out with this. So we're on the same page.
We are on the same page. Yeah, I was very much, I was not at that DARA meeting, but I know that it was during that meeting where apparently there was some discussion and a few folks did have differing points of view. So unless there are any comments right now, what I'd like to do is ask a few people who might like, I only have two people, as a matter of fact, who would like to speak to this. The first is Will Heinisch, who's not here tonight. But Will has asked me to read a letter, and I think this was sent to a council. And Will Heinisch has been very, very involved in this community in so many ways from the get-go on this, as this really served the AGN thing, Revitalization Project, served as the catalyst for this. So bear with me as I read Mr. Heinisch's letter. "Good evening, Council. I wish to express my support in an area of concern for the Police-to-Citizenry Initiative. I first saw the program two years ago in an Annie Glidden North Task Force Group discussion for safety and security by Commander Woodruff. I appreciate and support his efforts on working on this program for over two years. I think an informed community and transparent police department is a positive for the community. Citizens become more vigilant and can help build strong neighborhoods and communities by being informed and aware of their surrounding. It's good that the citizens can report incidents, make requests, and see what's going on on a daily basis, or track an event that may have happened down the street." In his final paragraph, he says, "An area of concern is the mapping feature, red dots. I believe the data could be misinterpreted or have a negative effect, specifically looking at the AGN area. Because of a much higher density, that area is naturally going to show more activity. I do not want to discourage new residents from coming into that area. Annie Glidden North Task Force Groups, the newly-formed CDC, and the majority of landlords continue to work to improve and redevelop that area. We do not want to hinder those efforts. I would be interested in seeing if a potential resident could put in a specific address for a house or complex and see the number and kind of incidents at that specific property. It's also important to see what kind of data is shown. Such as a banning notice by a landlord should not show as an incident, as this is a positive and not a negative. I would like to see a couple of minor changes and continued discussions before it is released. I look forward to seeing what questions and concerns the city council and their constituents have as well. We're all working towards a safe and prosperous community. Thank you for your time, Will Heinisch, local businessman, landlord, and Annie Glidden North Task Force member." Another person who'd like to speak to this is Jim Mason. And Craig, we'll get to answering any of Will's questions if you'd like tonight.
Certainly.
I saw you nodding your head a couple of times, so let's see. And I kept it within three, Jim, so you do the same, okay?
I'm not as educated as you. Ladies and gentlemen, residents, Mr. Woodruff, you done a good job here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I've been in this community since 1964, and I've seen a lot of changes. And everybody's working for a common cause here. And as you made your presentation tonight, a lot of these things are wonderful. And I'll get right to it. If you make it easy for people to see where there has been an incident, et cetera, et cetera, it creates a pattern in the blogosphere that the community has problems in this area, this area, this area. What happens is, is when a person goes to refinance these properties and the banks see what's going on in this, it's so easy to see the red dots. It could cost you 200 basis points on a $30 million mortgage. So the only thing that I was, and I apologize, I wasn't at the meeting that night, and I'm supposed to be there. I'm in Board of Directors. But I would suggest that you delete that, but give the people the ability to go to the rest of your format. If they really want to find out what's going on in DeKalb, make them read it. So when you splatter it out there, I saw how those circles were around there. That scares people. And we don't want to scare people because we want people to come to the community for all these other reasons. So, and I really would only talk to Will Heinisch, and I saw some of my words in his letter. And Rich Schultz is here tonight. And so I was asked to speak on behalf of those people. And as we work through this, I applaud you on all the different nuances in this thing. And I think it's a great idea. But if we can get this map under control, I'm willing to work with you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Rich Schultz.
Rich Schultz. Born and raised in DeKalb here. Thank you, Mayor. I did have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
Are the dorms and the housing building, are they going to be under this program?
No, we do not police campus, so we do not keep their stats.
What about the DeKalb Housing Building, Taylor, Taylor Street Building, Highrise?
Highrise, yes.
Okay. My concern, I think it's a good program for the most part. What I'm concerned about is that when we start branding or tagging somebody, I think it's dangerous. I've seen what you guys have done. All you guys have worked so hard to make our community better. Really, everybody in this room, I look around. I would hate to see us make a critical mistake by putting dots up on our community. It's, to me, it's not the direction we want to go. I would like to see us promote our city better. For transparency, I get that. But, excuse me, I have a cold here. But I would like to see that used more as, you know, you promote it as, "Look at the good things we've done." If you put dots out and how you guys are rebuilding downtown, you're fixing our water system, you're repaving our streets, you've worked on our parks. We maybe will get a clinic on the northwest side, maybe a grocery store. How about an officer saving someone from a burning wreck? You know, just something like that. I think we need to stay in that direction. I'm okay with showing some of the things, but putting people's pictures up on a website that have been arrested, and just because someone's been arrested doesn't mean they're guilty. You know, I thought this country, you're still innocent until you're proven guilty in the court of law. So I think we need to be a little careful about that, too. But, you know, I'm happy with the direction we're going. I just want to see us going in that direction. I'm just afraid if we put a big blotch on us, are we going to keep the ship going forward? You know, if I come in, I'm out of town, and I'm moving down here, and I come from Wisconsin, my wife and I, we're excited about this new opportunity that DeKalb is offering. So I get a job with Confectionery. And we're pulling up a website to check out our, where our best neighborhood, or we could live, or the schools. And all of a sudden, 500 red dots pull up. I mean, I just, I just think in a split second, I'm going to make my decision. And I pull the same website up on Sycamore, and there's not one red dot. Where are you going to go? You know, so I just think, I just want to do a better job, and I just want to make sure that we're thinking this out fully before we do something like this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Rich. Okay, those are the only two public comments that, or public members who have indicated an interest in speaking to this. I'm going to open it up now to council because we are being asked for, excuse me, before I get to Bill, we are being asked for, to provide some direction to our city manager and to Commander Woodruff tonight. Bill?
I don't want to interrupt the council's discussion. I just, I just wanted to say, Mayor, since you read Will Heinisch's question, and we left that in the air, the answer to that is, can a potential resident put in a specific address for a house or complex and see the number of kind of incidents at that specific property? The answer is yes.
The answer is yes.
Without the map.
Thank you. Okay. Council, we're being asked for, to provide some direction. I'd open it up. Any questions or comments? Alderman Fanucan.
When you know the, the idea of the concept, or the concept of a portal, I think, is very important for the transparency. I do share some of the concerns about the map. I understand the folks' thoughts there. Following up on one of Dick Schultz's comments, so on the, on the arrest reports. Those arrest reports are already in the daily papers, just minus the mugshots. So I don't think we're providing any more information than is already there. Obviously, the crime, the case numbers aren't in the paper, but at least the arrest reports are, that so-and-so has been arrested. So I don't think that's any more information, really, than what is already public. So I, I'm comfortable with that part of the portal being there. So, but I do see, understand the concerns about the map.
Thank you.
Only one point of clarification there as well. By statute, we actually have to release the name, the charge, and the photo within 72 hours of every person being arrested. So we do that through man-hours now. This simply automates it. So that is required, actually, by Illinois statute.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Morris.
Do other communities have this, and who's piloted it, and what are the results?
I've looked at a number of other communities that have it, mostly the ones that have exactly the same software provider we do. Naperville has it. They've got a different version that does the mapping side of it, and they are currently rebuilding theirs. So theirs is the old system. Frankly, it doesn't look very good, but they hope by the end of this week, actually, to have theirs up. They release their information through a different third-party vendor, but they're doing many of the same things. And looking at different places in different states. High Point, North Carolina has it. A couple places in Alaska have it. I'm happy to email out a list to anybody who's interested. It's a bit of a mixed bag of what exactly they're doing with them. Many of them are doing the mapping, some of them are not. It's also a question of what their software capabilities are, which frankly, I just, I don't know.
So do you know how many cities are doing this?
With this particular software, I couldn't tell you. And then there's, of course, many other different softwares out there.
Alderman Verbic.
This is outstanding. It's just got to be a huge time saver for what you go through each and every day. And it's got to really open up opportunities to address more of the important work that's going on versus the clerical. Am I correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay, great. I can see the points of the red dots, and the truth is sometimes inconvenient. We have to understand where our challenges are to be able to address our challenges. And I get the point of trying to turn everything into being a positive, and that positive is the transparency that so many people demand from us. So this is a great way of providing that, and I thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Any other comments? Alderman Perkins.
To what degree do you have the ability to remove things from this or add other elements to it? Say, for instance, we wanted to carve out the mapping piece. How difficult is that?
Very easy. I can remove the mapping without any trouble.
And then within that, is there a public version and a version that the police department could use? Because I see value both ways. The red dot thing is, it makes me pretty uneasy. However, as a tool for you guys, I could really see that being a valuable tool for you guys.
Yes, sir. We have a different version of this. This is solely public. We have software on the, on our end that does exactly this. Because like you're saying, the red dots feeds into our data-driven policing model, where we map out where crimes are occurring, and that's where we put the people. We do that through completely different software that's related and pulls all the same data, separate from this.
Okay. Alderman Smith.
I guess since you threw me under the bus, I will. Commander Woodruff correctly, before I retired, about four or five years prior, council approved this program, along with our new CAD software. It was demonstrated at the time. If Craig doesn't mind, I'll answer some of the agencies. The Oklawn Consortium, I think that's 24 agencies have it. Texas, Chicago PD just went on board with this exact software, including police-to-citizen. Craig's done a great job. You know, I agree with the ADA problem. That was a problem when I retired. One thing I should mention that came up is everything in here is FOI-able. I mean, we were getting requests for dots on the map of crimes before I left. This, if people want that information and we can produce it, we have to, meaning, I'm not going to say "we," I'm going to throw it on Craig's lap, that he has to produce it. I don't know if he's had any requests for that, but if an agency can produce the data, then we have to, meaning the city has to release it. As far as the dots go, that was always a contention. And I think Craig's right. I mean, I know he's right. It could be removed, and I think some tweaking on the city's end, and my utmost faith in the police department and Commander Woodruff, will make this a very viable project. The biggest thing is to remove a lot of the burden of registering a bike of the officers. I mean, they want to take the report, but that takes, you know, half hour. That's a half hour that they can be spending doing something else, realistic. You know, the, we still make a contact, I believe that Craig said, with the follow-up phone calls. So you still have that interaction, but we have to look at reality and the amount of man-hours that are going into some of this. Then our demands put on our public safety, police, fire, everything else is growing. So this is a good project. I believe, is there not a fire department side out there as well, do you recall?
I have not seen it.
Jeff, maybe not. Maybe, maybe it was brought up before I left. But anyway, I'm for this. I think, you know, I've heard from a couple of people, maybe some tweaks to the dots. But all in all, we have to remember, anybody can FOIA every piece of information the police department has, and they have to produce it. So there is a way through this program to reduce it. The 72 hours, you know, Craig's absolutely right. That's the first time anybody's mentioned it, other probably than him and I. We have to produce to, you know, available all the arrest information, including a photograph, within 72 hours. So that's something they have to maintain anyway. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Tracy. I appreciate your, your work when you were working there at the police department and your help on getting this started. So what I hear you saying is that you're comfortable with everything you can see, perhaps some tweaking on the map portion of the software. Would that be a fair phrase or not?
It's a very viable product, and I think Craig, Craig has the expertise. He can tune it if he wants. And I think that's a very good place. But we have to start somewhere. I really think we have to.
Alderman Morris.
I think this, you know, at first glance, this was highly impressive, seems highly desirable. You know, I think the most interesting and desirable feature is the mapping, because everybody wants to see it on a map and understand it, and it's like right there. And especially for people moving here from elsewhere, what else would you want to explain to you exactly where to live? But I can see the downsides to that as well. I think that I need to bring this back to my constituents. I, I don't really know what to think about this. I think there are a lot of potentially unforeseen consequences that, I don't know, I sincerely don't know what to think. It sounds really exciting, and I like it personally, but there may be consequences that I haven't considered yet.
Alderman Faber.
Thank you for your work on putting this together. So it, it sounds like it's a, it's going to save time on the police officer's side.
Yes, sir.
So I'm for that, absolutely. I, I think I'd be for rolling it out without the map would be my suggestion. You know, in terms of the photographs, you know, that comment that was made earlier, I think if you're on Facebook, I think you can look at all the arrests, and you'll get a picture of the photograph. And, I mean, all that's, it's already out there today. So the map, although I agree with the other Aldermen, I think it's, that's what I would look for if I was moving to a community. I think I would hold that back just for now, until we think about that a little bit more, and what the impact might be on the community. But I'm okay going forward without the map. But I'm okay going forward without the map.
Yeah, I would certainly concur with that, Tony, myself. I, I, I think we'd like to maybe tweak that map component. Everything else, I think, is exactly what this community was asking for. Exactly what this community was asking.
Mr. May, on the tweet question, I, I just asked Craig, what can be tweaked? He said the color of the, of the flag. So there's no tweaking, it's, it's all or nothing. You either have the map or you don't.
Okay. Alderman Verbic.
I, I think the map, even though I understand the objections, I think it's important also for people like the, us that are elected. We need to determine where our, our resources are needed, and how we can best apply those resources, not just from a public safety standpoint, but the public safety issues can be a symptom of another challenge that someone may be having. So I think it really is helpful for us as elected officials to see, and we do see oftentimes the data of where the number of, of demands are. But I think if, in some way, maybe the dots could be clear, or, you know, I, maybe work with property owners and figure out how that could maybe be presented in a better way. But I think the information is very important.
Alderman Smith.
Craig, one more thing. Do we still not get, the police department still not get FOIAs from residents asking about crime in a specific area?
Yes, we do.
I mean, we get those on a continual basis. So where I'm going with that is our FOIA requests, we're still releasing the information. If I want to live in X apartment, I FOIA how many crimes occurred within, you know, at that residence, within that block, we have to produce. And, and the police department, as far back as when I was in, getting back there, was getting a lot of those. And that, that again, is time. So, but I'm still agree with the map. I mean, I, I like it, but I understand everybody's concerns, and I, I would like to see it start somewhere. But I just want everybody to understand, that data is still going out to those people that request it, whether it's on a dot or via a FOIA request. So if someone wants to move to town, there have been numerous FOIA requests from parents, from people wanting to relocate, how many, how much crime was in a particular area, and that's, that's been released to them. But, that's all.
Alderman Faber.
So my, my only response to that is, if somebody wants to commit a crime, they'll commit a crime, but if you put a padlock on a door, 90% of the people will walk past that door and won't open it. So if you make someone FOIA the police reports, 90% of the people won't do that. But if we make them absolutely public, it could impact somebody's business, somebody's, you know, the, the rental, the home values in a given neighborhood. So it, it's a question, sure, it's FOIA-able, anybody can access it, how many people will? So when you put that barrier in front of them, they won't go ahead and do that. But if we put it out there, now potentially the home values in a, in a given ward, because I was sitting here thinking, maybe we just do it by ward. We just put 25 in ward number one, you know, 18 in ward seven. But same thing, I mean, it's going to impact the home values in, in a given ward. If you, sure, again, it's available, but if you just put it out there publicly, it's going to have an impact. And that's what I'm saying, it's just, we need to consider, before we turn it on, what is that impact going to be? Because once we turn it on, you're done.
Alderman Verbic.
And the dot doesn't tell the whole story. So I think that's what the real challenge is, is that people, certainly in our community, deserve to be well-informed, but I think we have to be careful of what the dot implies versus what is the reality.
Alderman Morris and then Alderman Smith. Alderman Morris.
And to add to what Alderman Faber said, I think that, you know, it could have that snowball effect, where if you turn it on, then it perpetuates dramatically the situation as it is.
Alderman Smith.
I guess I agree with everybody here, and caught in the middle of 30-plus years of law enforcement, is you want the police department to be more transparent, they are. If it means giving up the dots, I'm okay with that, to see this program launched. You know, I was just bringing up the fact that people have been, you know, constantly FOIA-ing the police department for this data, for as long as FOIAs have been around. But if removing the red dots will get this program off the ground, then I am for it.
Alderman Morris.
One of the thoughts that I had as you were beginning was perhaps demonstrating the red dots with a per thousand, you know, putting them in a, in an appropriate framework. So although you've got 18 dots in this space, maybe you put them as a, an appropriate ratio to the population, so you've got each dot demonstrating more clearly, you get what I'm saying, right?
I do. Unfortunately, we're limited by the software. It pretty much just puts it on an address point. I can't really put in too many other variables.
The other thing I was going to add to that was, so, you know, if there are many other communities doing this, that, that would be good. And if we were doing it like them, that would be good, because I think it would also demonstrate that rela-, you know, I think if we were, you know, we tried to pull up Naperville's here while we're sitting here, and I think looking at that, you'll see, oh, well, there's a larger population. So, you know, especially if you can't do it by ratio, you know, you want to compare with other cities, and you look at the other city and go, oh, well, they're really dangerous, you know? But that wouldn't be the perception otherwise, until you look at the numbers as just pure numbers. So, yeah, I think there's a lot to think about here.
Alderman Verbic.
And can we add the dots later, or some other type of identifier? So if we, if the map is not released with the initial release, could that be added at a future date?
Yes, I could turn it off right now and turn it on whenever I like. There's a switch in the backend.
Okay, great.
Councilor is being asked for some direction, our city manager is being asked for some direction, so is our police department. I, I think what I hear tonight, and correct me if I'm wrong, with the possible exception of our first word, Alderman Morris, who feels that we should probably look at the entire program to a greater length. I, I sense that our consensus is that we're all in favor of what the police department has shown us and what it is trying to do in our community. Would it be consensus that we are in favor of rolling out everything, with the exception of the map? And the map, even though I know we cannot tweak it much, perhaps we can have further discussion, and then at a time in the not-too-far-distant future, we could, we could give the police department either the go-ahead to post that, or to simply leave it without, leave this whole program without the map. Alderman Perkins.
I have fantastic data. It really is. It's, it's really thought-provoking. I've got concerns about more than the map, though. You know, the, the event search thing, you can get at a lot of stuff pretty quickly. To some extent, it feels, with the amount of data, like a bit of a marketing tool, or it could be used in that way, and in a not-so-good way. You know, particularly if we're the, the trendsetter in the community, and we're the first ones forward. That makes me a little uneasy with it. You know, particularly if you, if you think about other communities in the area, listening to some of the input here this evening, I'm uneasy about, about more than just the map. But there's, there's a lot of things in this that, that are really good. You know, I think the things, among the things that really could be good are some things that can drive out some costs for you guys. I'm not sure how the map fits into that. I'm not sure how some of the search things fit in. I agree with Alderman Faber, you know, with his, with the, the lock analogy. If people have to FOIA some things, they can. I'm just uneasy about putting it all right there at everyone's fingertips. So.
So are you in favor of not doing, not posting it at all?
No, there's a lot that I do like. You know, I, I would say I do like 70, 80% of it. But there's, there's some elements that I'm not as comfortable with. The map, the search feature, you know, putting it all right there at fingers, at people's fingertips, while it's a double-edged sword to me.
Thank you. Alderman Verbic.
Is there any other way to draw down the data, so that, again, the concern, and I share it with the number of FOIA incidents and requests, and again, I know that, absolutely know that there's things we, the community needs of your time that shouldn't be FOIA requests. Is there another way to, I guess, have that data in front of you, so that could be in front of the community in a more timely manners to avoid FOIA requests? In written form or in a searchable spreadsheet form?
I don't believe so. Not that would be any less impactful than what we're currently doing.
Okay, thank you.
Craig, what is the, what is the reaction? What is going to be the reaction of the rank and file within the police department on tonight's discussion, as it relates to releasing this and releasing it without the map at this point?
From the rank and file, I don't think there will be a large reaction. They enjoy some of the information, getting the theft reports through this portal, as opposed to having to drive across town to do that. Some people still like driving across town, they get the face-to-face meetings. I think the rank and file is looking forward to having a little bit of the burden removed wherever we can, but I don't see a, a large impact from this particular tool.
Alderman Morris.
Sorry, as I'm reviewing the Naperville website, I do see that they have a fire option here. And in addition to that, they have so many options in their scroll bar filter option thing, that I almost feel like because there's so many choices, you can click by deception, by deadly weapons, by non-criminal offenses, alcohol issues, burglary, you know, homicide, everything. They've got like, you know, maybe 30 options there. Because there are so many options, the excess of information, I think, almost is helpful in that it's so overwhelming that perhaps it doesn't make one area look more like something else. So they've also got EMS calls and other things like that, so I wonder if that would communicate a different picture. Just something to keep in mind to the council, I guess.
Any other comments? City Manager Nicholas, I know you're looking for direction.
Yeah, could I just summarize?
Sure.
If I may, and you can tell me if this is your thought. The council is aware, having heard it tonight from Craig and having, and also from Council Member Smith, that people are regularly inquiring about crime at certain addresses. And today, the way we handle that is that we, we do it the manual way. We, we give them something, we give them a report if they happen to be involved in some fashion. If not, and they're just curious, they FOIA. And then that involves somebody else taking some time. All the times the FOIAs are not specific to one place, and it, you've irritated somebody, so now they want to know, can you give me all the information you have about that block in the last five years? And we're obliged to, to answer that. What this is aiming to do, if you take away the dots and the map, is to give the same information to people readily, openly. And I think it's important information for people to have. I think it's fair to say that if somebody wants to know what happened at some address, they can, and they want to go to the trouble, and they're thorough about it, they can go to this same software and look it up without a map, without any dots. It's just that one address, right?
Correct.
In answer to Will's question earlier. So that's pretty sensible, I think. And if I'm a mom or dad, I want to know what happened at this address before I send my child to this town for school. I, I think you would all say that. So that's what this system provides, and it doesn't have some of the things that, what Council Member Morris had mentioned from just looking real quick at the Naperville site. This, this software doesn't have those options, so we'd have to start over and look at some other things. But it's something to, to consider as we go forward. So the package that's here is a package we've been working on for a couple of years. It, it makes it a little more seamless for the police department, a little more seamless for the public. We're trying to, to organize the troops that we have to go out and fight crime, right? But if you want them chasing bicycle permits, they can do that, too. It's, it's a distraction, though, and all that adds up in the course of a day. And I think this is a good program without the dots. And it doesn't take an ordinance. We brought this to you tonight because we really wanted to have this give and take. And after, and frankly, I thank Rich Schultz for, for seeing the problem with the dots and the maps Tuesday night, because we hadn't thought about that. And it was sort of a revelation, and, and that's why we brought it to you as a consideration. That's our job. What do you think? If I have summarized correctly, this could go live tomorrow without the maps, right?
Correct.
And I think that's consensus, with the exception of Alderman Perkins and Alderman Morris.
What do you, what do you think, Council Member Perkins? What else would you like to see adjusted? And we can bring this back at another time, if you'd like.
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Without the maps?
It's just, you know, a little overwhelming seeing it all for the first time.
Yeah.
There's a tremendous amount of, of great data.
And I felt it was just imperative, important, that this council have the discussion that we're having tonight.
Would you, it's kind of hard to ship you the software access individually, but we could try this without the, the dots and the maps, and I think the person who spoke to this would find that agreeable. And we could try it for a few weeks, and then come back to you and say, what'd you hear?
Craig, I think you have your marching orders.
Do I have one more question? Sorry. Have, have we heard from NIU? What are their thoughts on it?
On this?
Yeah.
Particular thing? I didn't ask.
I didn't ask.
I suppose there's a, sort of a, they're a different policing body in, in that sense.
Right.
It's a little different, yeah.
Because I know that's one of the issues that they're registering, they're wrestling with, is, you know, the amount of students they have.
I, I will say this, there, I can't help but think of the Clery Act. And some of those who are in law enforcement appreciate this. So now we are required by federal law, if you're, I should say, NIU is required by federal law, to reveal all crime statistics of 13 categories to the campus and to the world. And they draw attention and map the locations and dormitories where they're having these crimes, and why? Because parents who took, their name is Clery, about 20 years ago, took their daughter to a very prestigious eastern, eastern university, where she was brutally raped and murdered. And through their advocacy afterward, at the state level, they were able to get a state law requiring that universities in that state reveal this information. And then through their congressperson, got the Congress of the United States to require that all universities and colleges do this. Now, I'm not saying that what we're looking for is, is to do that, but I think it does raise the point, what's the problem with some of this transparency?
Mm-hmm.
That's what, what Council Member Verbic said. There are some things that parents want to know.
Alderman Smith.
Bill, good point on Clery. Craig, you probably know, how far we report data, we're required by law also to report our crimes, very specific statistics on Clery, within a certain range of fraternities, sororities, all of NIU's property, right?
Correct. Anything they own and anything that's student-affiliated.
Correct. So we are already providing that data, data to Clery in an open.
Correct. We, I believe we, we give it directly to Northern. Northern compiles it and sends it off to Clery.
Correct. Thank you.
This is not an item up for vote tonight, but I think, Craig, what I hear, the council fairly clearly saying that, I think we're comfortable with your releasing that as soon as possible, with the exception of the dots of the maps.
Thank you, sir.
And we welcome your thoughts and reactions of your constituents as you see this rolling out.
I should add, any emails that come through this come directly to me. So if any of your constituents want to reply to any comments on this, it'll come directly to us, and we can review them that way.
Anytime of the day or night.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, let's move, we have one other consideration. Okay, let's move, we have one other consideration tonight, and that, and City Manager Nicholas is looking for some direction from council, and that is a consideration of changes to Chapter 38 intoxicating liquors, underage BYOB, beauty nail salons, and fitness centers. City Manager Nicholas.
I didn't realize when I stacked these what we were going to get into tonight, but I think it's, it's appropriate to bring this back to the council. We had a meeting, as the council hoped we would, on February 6th. We invited all liquor license holders. We had a modest turnout, although some of the people who, some of the license holders and managers did represent their own establishments and reported that they were proxies for some others in town. So the council, back on January 13th, had talked about the possibility, and I think probably the prime consideration, was admitting 19 and 20-year-old persons to licensed bars. And as I said in my background, the actual bar license holders were not in favor of this, though some grudgingly said that if it was possible to have an opt-out clause where they didn't have to admit 19 and 20-year-olds, that they could abide by that. But they raised some interesting points, and a couple of them are, often see 21-year-olds and younger clientele, and they did point out that some efforts and costs would have to be incurred to create a separate area for persons who are 19 or 20, who could be carded and sort of supervised and watched so that they don't go to the restroom and then come back and slip by the bar and bring a drink back or something like that. And they also pointed out that in addition to that cost, they didn't think there would be a major impact because, and this one bar in particular said, look, we might have three or four people come in, and two of them are over 21, and two of them are 19 or 20. How do you think it will go if we say, well, you two have to go over here, and you two go over there on the other side of the bar? They'll probably all say, well, let's go someplace else. So it may or may not work out that way, but we hadn't thought about that, and I thought I'd report that. So what's before you tonight is how you'd like us to proceed. We welcome your direction on that point. Expanding the, bring your own booze or beer and wine, basically, options beyond establishments to serve liquor with a meal is not apparently, there's not apparently a groundswell in that, but there have been a couple of vendors who have said, boy, I'd like to be able to serve wine in my nail nook, that's true, or I'd like to serve wine or beer at my tobacco place and so on. We allow marijuana in a tobacco sales area now and have a little beer or wine on the side. But we're not hearing that from a lot of vendors. In fact, there are probably just a couple that we've heard that from. So we, but we would like your direction on all three of those.
Okay, there are, there's a potpourri of items to discuss here. I do have Bessie Kretopoulos who wants to speak to this item. Why don't you do that, Bessie, and then we'll open it up for discussion here.
Who else?
I beg your pardon?
You can do it.
And I think what we'll probably do, unless council feels we can take all four of those items in tandem, that we'll go one by one. Bessie Kretopoulos.
This topic brings back very bad memories. It is not as easy as it, as it seems, as Mayor of the city, liquor issues took up a great deal of my time, and a great deal of time for the staff in the city. Things have changed over the years as far as liquor consumption. I'm glad to see that maybe that it's on its way down, and people are being more responsible. That's evolved. But there's a reason as to why there is, why there are laws prohibiting 19 and 20-year-olds. There's a reason, because you're dealing with some potential danger. I mean, there's, there's no way around it, there's no way you can, you can erase that. And as City Manager Nicholas pointed out, a good portion of the people who attended that forum, they, the owners and managers, they weren't really thrilled with, with it. There's a cost of the business to be thought of. There's also the resources to hire police officers necessary to take care of, making sure that the regulations are found, are taken care of and watched. One thing that I would caution you is, there is a reason why 19 and 20-year-olds should not be drinking. And the one thing that I looked at more than anything, and you can look back on the records, you can talk back to the old police chiefs, et cetera, and so on, it boiled down to one word: safety. Safety of the patrons, and in my experience, it was in large part the people who were actually patronizing the various liquor establishments, safety of the owners slash people who, their staff in the various liquor establishments, and safety of the police officers. Those were the things that were prominent in my mind and during my tenure, and the things that I had experienced, and it was not easy, Mr. Smith, Mayor Smith, it was tough, as you well know. I did not want any patrons hurt, I did not want any staff people hurt, and I most assuredly did not want any police officers hurt. And if you take extra measures to make it a little tougher, it might be the best all the way around for the community. It's not as easy as it seems. So though there might be something said for getting a pedicure and having a glass of champagne, I don't know, but trying to lighten it up a little bit for you, because it's not an easy decision.
Thank you. Okay, well, let's open it up, first of all, on the 19, 20-year-old scenario, allowing them in establishments that serve alcohol. Alderman Morris.
I think that Alderman Faver and I had brought this to the council because this was what we were hearing, and apparently we were wrong. So I think that all of my intent, and I think his intent, too, and of course, you can speak to that, is just to support our business owners. So if they don't want it, all we want to do is what they want to do so that they can do business better. That's it.
Right.
Alderman Faver?
No, I would, I would absolutely agree. That's, I had heard that there were several business owners that were, that was what they wanted, they wanted, you know, if somebody wanted to go out, you know, to have dinner, and the over 21 could have a beer with their dinner, and the under 21s could, they could all sit at the same table and enjoy a meal together. But, yeah, I'm kind of surprised that it didn't, that it didn't get the support that I was led to believe it had, so.
And I'm really surprised, frankly, that we don't, we don't see a large contingent of the 19 and 20-year-olds who are lobbying for this at this point.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Alderman McAdams, and then Alderman Verbic.
I just want to echo what the other Alderman have said. I'm shocked that this is the reaction, but let's do what the people want.
Yeah. Alderman Verbic?
Yeah, those serving in Ward 6 said no. Couple, a couple had some ideas, thought, well, what if we just take the school IDs from NIU and Kishawaki College students, for example? But, you know, they weren't comfortable right out to say that it's a good idea.
Okay, there seems to be consensus here, then, that we'll move along with no change. Status quo. Now let's go to BYOB, bring your own bottle into establishments that serve liquor with the service of a meal, or beyond establishments. I think this was initially brought up by the hookah bar who wanted a easing of the rules that would allow them to, to allow folks to bring in, I guess, their beer or wine. What thoughts do we have on that? Alderman Faver?
Well, is, I guess, what's the difference, then, between B and C?
B is, there are currently two options for people to bring their own beer or wine, but there has, it has to be in a place that serves meals, so it's basically a restaurant. Bring your own, there's a corkage fee that's allowed, and then the third is to allow liquor service, and I assume that would be BYOB, although, and we haven't gone, I guess, in the extreme, you would have a tobacco lounge applying for liquor license. We don't have that license, we'd have to create a license for that, but. One vendor just trying to, you know, maximize the clientele, can't be faulted for that, certainly, but the staff, I can say pretty firmly, and in terms of what the other liquor license holders are saying to us, this isn't one to do a back somersault on.
What was, I'm sorry, what was the last?
How do I put that? This isn't supported by.
What was, what was that exchange?
A back somersault.
What did you say, Tony?
I just asked him to repeat what he had said.
I don't know, I guess I'm a little high on this discussion, I don't know.
Okay, very good. Alderman Perkins?
Clarification on the scope of what B is. Is B bottle or is B beer?
Bring your, bring your, your own bottle, I should say, so it's beer and wine.
So it's?
You don't bring your own.
So it's not my own Jack, then?
No.
Okay.
You do that at my house, but not anyone else.
Alderman Morris?
I think I'm highly supportive of being able to have BYOB at tobacco lounges, fitness centers, nail salons. It seems like a nice creative way to do business and, you know, make a place fully marketable, so.
Alderman Faver?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I think one of the earlier things we heard was, there was actually maybe a fitness center wanting to actually offer more than just beer and wine, though.
Is that correct?
They wanted actual liquor license.
Well, they, they hadn't, they weren't familiar with our liquor bureaucracy, but they wanted to know if it could be done, and in this case, it would require a different kind of license, right?
Yeah. So, and I don't, so to clarify, I don't think the tobacco shop is asking for BYOB. I think they want to be able to sell beer in their establishment and wine in their establishment and charge patrons. I don't think they want people to bring in a six-pack of beer while they enjoy their shop. Is that your understanding?
I think that's true. They are going to charge people to smoke marijuana.
Correct.
So, I think it's $7. $7 for the first hour and $5 every hour after that, truly.
Yeah.
So, and while you're at it, another $5 or $7 for a drink, I guess.
That was not my impression. My impression was just the opposite, is that they simply wanted people to be able to bring in their beer or their wine to enjoy with their.
As a practical matter, I have to point this out, we're talking theory here, but as a practical matter, if you're going to have alcohol, or tobacco for that matter, you have to have somebody who's trained to card people, because otherwise, you're, and you've got some marijuana, some alcohol, and some tobacco, you've got a problem if you don't have somebody really rigorously enforcing the 21 and over rule. So, and we require BACIT training in our bars and restaurants that serve alcohol, or any other places that serve alcohol. We're going to create a, we're going to create a bureaucracy here for a couple of vendors training and supervision and the rest of that. Now, other places can do this, you can go in a, in a major metropolitan area, and you can find it. You can find alcohol in a variety of other places. That's, that's true. We, I'm saying this is the keeper of the budget, we don't have that, those kind of resources to that kind of structure at this point. I think we're trying to be everything to everybody, and we can't afford it right now.
Alderman Verbic?
Does the notion of a BYOB water down, pardon the expression, those businesses that have invested in an inventory of alcohol? In other words, they're investing in better service, safer service, training, license, inventory? Does this really fly in the face of those that have already made that investment, or is this really providing a community service? And onward to the budget talk, is there any kind of fee that could be charged to offer up this BYOB? In other words, to try to recover some of the costs that it will require us to seek out?
The fee would be exorbitant from the standpoint of the consumer, because we, you know, we can't come close to covering the cost of police officers making those kinds of checks.
Then I'm a no.
Alderman Faver?
Our current restaurants that have BYOB, what are their requirements in term, do they have to go through that BACIT training? They have to go through all that?
They have to have people who are trained to do that, yeah. And they also, you know, they touch the bottles, they pour, or generally, they don't pour, they cork, or I'm cork, and, you know, because people oftentimes, they don't bring a corkscrew and that type of thing.
Alderman Morris?
I mean, from what I'm seeing online, BACIT training for a three-year certification costs $12.75, so I don't understand what the, what the barrier is.
We have to, it's not, we don't pay that cost, but we have to pay people to make sure that they're RBACIT trained. And we're talking about proliferation, excuse me. Nail salons actually are already serving wine illegally, so we haven't dropped the bomb on them, but that's true, so.
So you're suggesting that the cost would be exorbitant to allow the fitness center and the nail salons to have?
Here's what I'm saying very specifically, and I'll be very clear. We're, we're down right now in our police officers. We have an authorized size, authorized force is 65. We're at 59 right now, just because of turnover and so forth. We need to quickly get up to 65. It'd be the first time we've probably ever been at our authorized level, just because of retirements and illnesses and, you know, injuries and the rest. So we don't have any officers a spare to go around to check nail salons and hookah bars and, and other places. When we do, when we have those means, and by the way, we're trying to track companies to build up our sales tax, and our property tax, we can do that, we can, we can be more, I think, flexible in this area, and that'd be fine, it'd be enjoyable, but even answering complaints, we're creating another potential complaint in these places. So you're sitting next to somebody having their nails done, and you object to the fact that your daughters or son are there, and they're underage, and that person's drinking. So who's going to enforce that?
Alderman Verbic?
Not on the list, but I'm going to circle back to the comment about the fees being charged for the privilege to smoke marijuana in said salon, with $7 for the first two hours, $5 for one hour. Do we have the right or ability to charge a fee, getting back to, again, recovering costs that the city will bear on supporting this activity? So out of the $7, for example, could we impose a 50-cent fee or something that's fair since really that, again, from a business decision, that's, the business has decided how much they need to charge to have that chair for an hour? Should not, shouldn't that be, much like the sales of recreational marijuana at 3%? Shouldn't there be a percentage charge on that?
I see your point. It would probably be perceived as a nuisance fee, though. It would not be so much that it would make any difference at all, I wouldn't even pay for the gas to go over and investigate a claim.
Okay.
So people would say it's another city exaction and business unfriendly.
Thank you.
What I think, Alderman Perkins?
One last one, so with, with any of these, what's the demand? Is anyone really clamoring for this, or we had one inquiry for each element?
Not seeing any, any general demand. Not seeing any, any general demand.
So there really isn't any demand for, there may be one, it's one-zie-two-zie-type things, right? Nothing is going to set the world on fire.
That's correct.
Is that an official term, one-zie-two-zie? Okay.
It can be.
What I hear here, Alderman Morris?
I guess I want to circle back to, you know, the license holders who already had separate guest or banquet areas in their establishments that could be separated from the rest of their service areas, would like to provide hospitality events for underage community groups. So, I guess I just want to be accommodating to our business owners, is all I'm saying. I don't want to have to say no to them, and I don't think we should if we can say yes. So, so as far as these things go, I want to support what they want.
I think that last one, we haven't gotten to that one yet, but I do support that. An example would be, and I don't think they would mind that we use it as an example, the, there are two hospitality rooms in the back of...
Thatties.
Thatties, thank you. And specifically, although the owner and the manager spoke very strongly against the idea of the 19, 20-year-olds in the front area, the general serving area, for example, they sometimes have a college group in, and there's a mix of age, 19, 20, 21, 22, and some are of age, some aren't, and, and they are well chaperoned with their faculty advisors, sometimes faculty and so forth. Sometimes it's a, an honor group that's back there, and they're, they're honoring some particular individual or individuals, and there is some wine served. And so they're wondering what criteria we could provide. For instance, you can, you can be 19 or 20 years old and be in a bar if you're accompanied by a parent or a guardian. So if we wanted to consider expanding that a little bit to, to define what a legitimate chaperone was, or guardian in effect, I'd be in favor of that. That makes some sense, because then that business can plan a couple nights a week on having groups in and accommodate both the adult interests and the underage interest. And maybe set a threshold, so this isn't for Cub Scouts, this is for, you know, college age, or 18 or over, or something like that. Your call. We can pursue that further.
Yeah, I think at the very least, we should be pursuing that further.
Yeah, I think at the meeting that we had with the liquor dealers, at which time it was very, very clear that they were dead-set against the 19, 20-year-olds, but they did want to know that this city would be in a business-friendly posture, if you will, as it related to certain things like Bill just explained. And our sense was, that is something that I think would be worthy of, of our supporting, and that is in a business-friendly manner. So what I think what I hear here on this underage BYOB, beauty nail salons and fitness centers, is that at this point, we will allow the status quo to be what it is. We will certainly be open to any reasonable request. As you suggest, Alderman Perkins, this has not been a large deluge of, of folks who, who wanted, wanted all of these changes. So no action? Is, is, is that the non-direction that you, that you needed?
Well, I would like to pursue Councilmember Morris's suggestion. I can bring that back at a future meeting, just as a consideration in and of itself. It seems to be one we can get our arms around and create a license for with certain provisions, and if you're okay with that, I'll bring it back.
Okay?
Thank you.
Can we move along? Okay, let's go to Jay on our agenda, resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2020-017, authorizing a social services agreement with Adventure Works for the continued provision of social services at University Village, effective January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020. Entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Verbi. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Just very briefly, this particular agreement is connected to the, the remodeling, the significant remodeling and the new ownership and management of the University Village that occurred in recent years. And there is an annual amount that was set aside as a seeking fund by security properties for the purposes of, of funding certain types of social services. What this does is, is create an agreement between us and Adventure Works for the continued provision of social services that have been provided there. And Adventure Works works with other local agencies, such as DeKalb County Community Gardens, and it's been very successful in the last 12 months, and we'd like to extend that.
Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbi?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanoukian? Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight-eye.
That resolution is approved. Number two, Resolution 2020-018, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and approving the purchase of one ambulance from Fire Service Incorporated, with additional items necessary to place the ambulance in service, in an amount not to exceed 150, $155,000. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The price that's in the budget for 2020 for the new ambulance that the council authorized last November is 155,000, as the mayor said. And looking at, specing out what that ambulance needs, the department in, in the last couple of years has been very happy with the layout that is done by Fire Service, Inc. When we bought the last ambulance, they basically created a, they called it a tag-on option, which means that they would stick to a price for the next year, if, in this case, if we order before March 1st, which is coming up very quickly. So we brought this back to the council. This does not preclude the, whatever the council decides to do tonight, it does not change what's in the budget. It also does not preclude us from pursuing the lease options that we have talked about here before. In fact, that is our intent. But the package is going to expire. We can go on the market and see what we can get from the looking that the fire department has done in, in the last week or two. We feel this is the best deal out there, so it would require a special two-thirds vote of the council to weigh the bidding on this. We're not anxious to get something without testing the market, and I believe the, the fire department and Chief McMaster have done that, so I'll bring it to you for, for your action tonight.
Any further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbi?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanoukian?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight-eye.
That resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Moving on to ordinances, item K on your agenda. Number one, ordinance, we have one ordinance for second reading tonight, ordinance 2020-009, authorizing a tax increment financing development incentive agreement with 206 East Lincoln Highway LLC, Rosa Baillie, for the rehabilitation of property located at 206 East Lincoln Highway. This was passed, as you recall, under first reading, the last council meeting. We're now being asked to vote approval of second reading and entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanoukian, seconded by Alderman Smith. City Manager, do you have anything else on this?
Just to say that, as you recall, the, the attorney for the family had asked that we defer this for two weeks, so that he'd have more time to look at it. He's consulted with the city attorney, was before you, is agreeable to all parties, and we urge your approval on second reading.
Any other questions or comments on this? Roll call.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbi?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanoukian?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight-eye.
That ordinance is approved. Let's move on to several ordinances that we have for first reading. The first one, number one, 2020-010, authorizing the vacation of 5,774 square feet of public right-of-way at John Street and Lincoln Highway, and sale of same to Rocho Enterprises LLC in the amount of $8,500. If you recall, we had a public hearing on this very same thing about an hour ago. I'd entertain a motion on this first reading of this ordinance, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager Nicholas, any comments?
Just to say that we recommend this, the area in question had been abandoned by us for any future public use a couple decades ago, and as part of a state improvement project on Route 38, John Street was disconnected from access to Route 38. And then some years passed, and then the Rochos approached the city, and back in 2007, and asked if they could convert that area, that's about an eighth of an acre, into parking area at their own expense, which they did. They spent several hundred thousand dollars to do this, but it served their, their little retail strip well, according to my conversation with them. And they've been maintaining it at their sole expense ever since. What they've done now is approach the city, looking to this outright purchase that we're not making much off the lease, which is a dollar at the time, because of the investment they made. And if they're, if they're repairing it and keeping it up, and, and they're not paying the lease, they offered us a purchase price, which, for an eighth of an acre, translated into an acre, that's an acre worth $68,000. It's 8,500 is what they've offered, but that's more than what the going price of an acre of land is on that strip. So, we, we support their, their offer. I don't know if Archer Jones is in the audience tonight. We'd like, if you're agreeable, to go to second reading tonight, so we could close on this property and move, move forward.
Okay, any comments? We are now initially voting on first reading. Roll call, please.
Verbi?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanoukian?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight-eye.
Anyone care to...
A move that we waive second reading and approve?
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Fanoukian and seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanoukian?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbi?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight-eye.
That ordinance is approved. Number two, ordinance 2020-011, amending Chapter 51, traffic, Schedule C, parking prohibited, Section 18, no parking at any time except for residents, tow zone, and Schedule E, limited parking subsection, 10 minutes for the purpose of loading and unloading persons as it pertains to a parking restriction for portions of Bar Boulevard and the entirety of Hedge Drive, Lauren Drive, Northern Court, and University Drive. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Faver. We do have two folks who would like to speak to this tonight. First of all is Mike Treadle.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, Council. Thank you for allowing us to speak to this, and thank you very much, Alderman McAdams, for your efforts on this as well. This is a problem that we've been living with on Bar Boulevard. I've been there since 1987, and as Dave Ramsey says, yes, my grass does feel differently under my feet, because the house is paid for. And so it's not something that we're, that it's a new issue. It's something we've actually been working with. I personally have worked with the school district and former alderpersons as well. And with the change from the high school to the middle school, the game schedule also changed as well. And so for the past five or six years, the problem has gotten to the point where it has really become a safety issue. And I want to make it very clear that the residents on Bar Boulevard are not against the games. We love it. Anything that you can do to get the kids involved and, and get them moving and get them active and get them outside and all that, you know, we, the announcers, not a big deal. The cheering, love it. You know, my lawnmower will drown that out if I don't want to hear it. But when those events are going, the street is clogged with parked cars, and people don't know how to parallel park. I've, I've given Alderman McAdams pictures, and I'm sure that others have seen these as well. Cars are parked two feet from the curb, cars are parked held or skelled, or cars are parked halfway across our driveways. Our driveways are used for turnarounds, and I have three instances that I'll share here with you. There was a time when our next-door neighbor needed to get out of her driveway, and somebody was unloading equipment in her driveway, in the middle. She asked them politely to move, and she got read the riot act with profanity and everything. That was actually the straw that broke the camel's back. My wife was backing out of our driveway as another car came flying in, and, you know, the people, as, as another neighbor shared with me, he made an observation, that the people aren't looking as they're going in the driveway, at the driveway, they're looking at the rearview mirror to see the parking space that they see down the road on the other way, to run down there and get that parking space. So, not only that, but now they're in a driveway where it's very difficult to see around the lines of parked cars that are parked out into the traffic lane, so that they can get out safely. And a third one happened to me. I was working on a trailer as part of my job at the time, and it was an enclosed trailer, so, you know, you couldn't see outside. There was an event going on. I jumped out of the trailer to go get a tool, just as a car pulled into the driveway, and I'm telling you, it is possible for a human being to turn around in midair, because I, some, I'm sure I hit the ground, because physics laws demand it. But I got back in that trailer so quick, it wasn't funny, and, you know, I'm not a little fella. But what we're looking for is a common sense solution, and I looked at the, at the ordinance, and I discussed it with several of the neighbors as well. And I want to thank you for this. This is a really good start. But I'm going to ask tonight that we hold this over for further discussion and have some further meetings on it, because there are a half a dozen tweaks that I have in here now, that we could, we should look at before we actually do this. Up to and including the fact that we may not need to do this any further down than Elizabeth, because the parking situation tends to be between Second Street and, and Elizabeth more than, more than before. So...
You're right at four minutes, Mike, so if you'd try to wrap it up.
Okay, I'll, I'll conclude. Dale Carnegie says 20 seconds, so I'll wrap it up. The, if, if we can get with Alderman McAdams and some of the other neighbors, we can put a meeting together, and we can go through, I've got a half a dozen deals that we can go through. But now you know the history behind it, and so we can move forward from there. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mike, appreciate it.
Thanks for having me, and thanks, Mike, and Scott, for your leadership on this. My name's Pete Vanderbleek. I live on the other end of Bar Boulevard, toward First Street. I happen to hear...
Thanks for having me, and thanks, Mike, and Scott, for your leadership on this. My name's Pete Vanderbleek. I live on the other end of Bar Boulevard toward First Street. I happened to hear about this from a friend over in the Annie Glidden North neighborhood at their ward meeting early this week, and I was like, what? They said, yeah, it's going to get an agenda item there, so I was a little surprised. So I live on the west end, and I'm here to tell you that the problems on the other end of our, of Bar Boulevard are real. I've seen Mike's pictures, he's got a lot of them. People, I think he even makes it even sound better than it is in some ways, because people are parking block completely into your driveway, parking driveways on the other end. It's pretty busy. And also, it was mentioned in the Chronicle today. That would have been a little short notice for me to get here tonight, but I just happened to hear about it the other night. So one thing is, in the proposal, a couple of items in there are a feature of one permit for the resident of the home for a car that they own. It's partly my fault, but I have five children, and I'm lucky enough to have my oldest one get her driver's permit today, so I'm a little worried about that. And then 12 guest permits for the entire year for people who stop over. When I saw that, I just know one thing is going to happen. One of my cars will get towed, or one of my friends or family will stop over, and I'll forget to put the guest permit in their car. Something's going to happen that way, and that's my bottom line as far as what my big concern is. My other concern is like, so a lot of Mike's problems, or the problems on that end of the block, they're all of our problems. That it's not the kids, like Mike said, it's some of their parents and maybe some of the spectators who come, and it's a small percent of them that cause, just like everything else, cause a lot of the problems. My concern is that this permitting situation is not going to prevent the people who park there for 10, 15, 20 minutes and then leave before anybody can do anything about it. I think the people that are going to be affected by it are the people like me who forget when they jockey a car around to put my other permit in the dash of my car and go away for a while and come back and find out that the car's been towed, and that was the only remedy in the list was towing, so I was a little concerned about that. I do think, like Mike said, the problem pretty much exists between Elizabeth and Fourth Street from that way down. First to Elizabeth isn't where the track is. Also, in the map, there's an unloading zone which runs from my end of the block for, I don't know how many feet it is, I couldn't tell on the scale, but it's really not where the need is for the unloading, because the unloading is over by the track. That's basically where a lot of the track of the track and football fields. And the unloading zone opens up the people to abuse. And I think that a lot of people, any one of Mike's pictures, you can probably cite some ordinance that those people are already breaking, and so I'm worried about adding this. Is it going to inconvenience Mike and all of his neighbors all the way down the block? And it might not solve the problem that we're trying to address. So I'm looking forward to dealing more on this situation with Mike and Scott and the neighbors down on our end. I only speak for myself, so I don't know what my neighbors think down on my end of the block. I went door to door, and only about three people were home yesterday to let them know, hey, look up the agenda and make your own mind up, or show up the meeting or whatever. So I don't know what they think, but it might be important for us to find that out. So thanks for your time, and thanks, Mike, for all your work.
Thank you, Pete. Yeah, I know, I think Scott McAdams, our fifth ward alderman, and I received an email early this morning from a lady who lives in the 100 block, so that would be near you, Pete, I think, and she really felt that we needed to have more discussion on this. City Manager Nicholas, do you care to make any comments? And then I know that a couple of our aldermen would like to make comments.
I think in both areas, there's interest in more conversation, and happy to recommend that you table this for now and bring it back at another time.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor and a second to approve this ordinance in first reading. That wouldn't necessarily mean that we could not make further changes and bring it back in second reading. Any comments? Alderman Verbic.
Does the parking lot at the school fill up? Is that why people are parking on the street, or is it because of proximity to the fields?
Laziness.
So why wouldn't we just simply try to encourage parking in the lots if the lot?
We've been doing that for 20 years.
The lots are still open?
Two-thirds empty.
Two-thirds empty. To me, that, again, certainly defer to my colleagues, that's their ward, but, you know, my voice would be, please use your parking lot, that's what it's there for.
Alderman Perkins.
So the south side of Bar Boulevard would still be public parking except for the loading area, then, the way this is written, right?
Parking would be prohibited except for the loading zone, unloading zone.
Okay, so the whole south side would be prohibited, then? Except the loading, okay.
We looked at other alternatives, and there were meetings, and then I think also this was a topic in both ward meetings. I wasn't at those discussions, but on Bar Boulevard, there are different issues at the two different places. At Bar Boulevard, there already is, for instance, some yellow striping, which is being ignored on the north side. So there was an effort to, at one time, make that the resident-only parking, but people were ignoring that, and you arrive for the track meet or the softball game or whatever, and you see that most of the street on both sides is parked, so you just ignore the yellow altogether and just think you're doing what everybody else is doing. And it's hard to enforce. You can go down and give a ticket to everybody, and then they leave and somebody else comes, because they're all day, you know, things going on all day on a Saturday for five, six months out of the year, so. We were trying to do something and thought the staff on our behalf were putting the idea of the permit parking out there so you could pretty readily see. You either have the flag on your visor or you don't, but the person who had written to the mayor this morning said, look, I have some other ideas and thoughts, I'd like to talk about this. So I think this is not ready yet. It's pretty strongly felt by some individuals in both neighborhoods, and maybe we'll kick it around some more and get a consensus that we can bring back to the council.
Alderman Fanouken.
I just want some clarification, because as I'm reading this, I don't see where parking on the south side is prohibited, other than within that loading zone. And you're saying that that's not?
The gentleman who's the expert is sitting in the blue sweater back there, Zach Gill, our city engineer. Let's bring him up here and ask him what he intended.
While Zach's walking up, can I ask a question? Have we considered reaching out to the school's principal and simply asking that they try to tell parents not to park there? Because my kids play there, and I've never heard anything, so I thought that that was an acceptable option, but it couldn't hurt, so.
The youth football organization put a letter out, and it alleviated it for about two games, and then it all right back in.
So, but enforcement, too, is an issue. Sorry, Ilan, Zach, talk.
Correct. Mr. Fanouken, as written, the south side would still remain open for parking outside of the loading zone.
Oh, I had that wrong way.
There was some discussion on that. The concern may be there are other taxpayers in the city who use the park, and I think there's an expectation that they could also park near the park.
But then that also would alleviate some of the residents' concerns about, maybe not during ballgames, but about the number of permits they had to use over the course of the year, too.
Correct. So if you had a birthday party and it didn't occur at the same time as a baseball game, you'd have the whole south side for your family and friends to park on, or if you need to do whatever.
Okay, and I just wanted to make sure we were all clear on that, so thank you.
Alderman Favor.
So I just want to thank Zach, and he mentioned April and the whole Public Works Team and the Police Department for the work that they've done to put together and to work with the different residents on these parking regulations. I understand how difficult it is. We don't want to have, we currently have different parking regulations throughout the city, and really, we need to standardize that. And what we talked about during my meeting is we really have three options. We have open parking, which is what my neighborhood currently has. I can park anywhere in either side of the street, in front of your house, my house, it doesn't matter. That doesn't work for the Lauren Hedge, because they're right up next to NIU, so they're going to have a lot of student parking, they're going to have visitors potentially from University Village parking in there. So then we have two other options. We have the Safe Streets method, which is registering every single car, so we have, and limiting the number of cars that can be registered. And that's on an annual basis. And then we have this sticker permitting, which, again, you know, the Public Works Team, Zach, they've really done a great job in trying to be, you know, now they're talking about they'll mail out these permits automatically to the residents, just trying to take any burden off the resident. So we're really making progress, the meetings are helping. The problem we have is nobody comes to the meetings, you know, it's our connected but disconnected world that we live in today. We can put it on Facebook, we can put it in the paper. I don't have every single person's email in my ward, so I can't send you an email blast. But even when we have a meeting, we have two people show up. So we'd pass the ordinance tonight, and tomorrow I'd get 100 emails. So it's just a challenge to really get the word out there so that we can sit down and really figure out what is best for the neighborhood. You know, personally, one of the problems, you know, we had three or four cars in my family, and the homes that we live in, a lot of our homes were not built to support three or four cars of every single home on every single street. We just don't have the parking for that. It's an American problem. The other, I'll just voice, one other concern that we do have is towing versus ticketing. The towing, I understand is very easy to enforce because it doesn't require the resources necessarily of the city. You know, it's going to be towed by, you know, a contractor's going to tow the cars, they're going to collect the fees, there's no burden on the city. The only problem is, is I think most people recognize that's probably the most difficult and most strict rule, you know, so I would be in favor of ticketing versus towing, but again, we'll have this discussion, again, I'm going to have another ward meeting before the next city council meeting. I don't have a date yet, just like last time, but we'll come up with a date. And at this time, I would like to actually table this until the first meeting in March.
Is that a motion to table?
Yes, sir.
Second.
The move that's seconded that we table, discussion?
I just have one more comment.
Yes.
We are having a fifth ward meeting on Saturday at Barb City Manor from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. Zach Gill has been nice enough to come down and join us at the meeting, so he will be taking your input directly, and then we can try and come up with a solution that everybody can.
Motion to table? Roll call.
Two things. One is, if you're going to postpone to a date certain, we should probably call it postponement instead of tabling. And secondly, I missed the motion and second on that. I don't know who did it.
I seconded.
The motion was made by Alderman Favor.
Okay.
And it was seconded by Alderman Morris.
Do we want to amend that to a motion to postpone?
If I must, yes.
Thank you.
Second that motion.
I think a motion to table is appropriate and proper, and if there's any concern about having the other substantive motion on the floor, the motion to table under Robert's rules would take precedence over the prior motion to approve the ordinance.
So is the motion on the floor to table?
I believe it is. Well, that's what I made. I made a motion to table it, so.
Carolyn seconded.
And that's, but I'm told that's not proper. If that's not proper.
It is proper. Our attorney just said it is proper.
Except that if you move to table, you will need to pick it back off of the table when you come back in. So there's a slight convenience factor there, and there's no reason not to postpone.
I don't think anybody up here is going to forget this. We're going to come back and talk about this again.
That's not what I'm saying.
I'm comfortable with tabling it. Roll call, please, to table.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Thank you. That motion, that vote on the ordinance is tabled, not, we don't have a specific date that we're going to bring it back, but in the interim, what I hear is that we have a ward meeting in Ward Five this weekend, we have another ward in meeting in Ward Seven for the Lauren Drive, Hedge Drive, et cetera, neighborhood there to a date, and a date to be determined prior to our next council meeting, at which time we may be prepared to bring this off the table, as our city clerk suggests, and then we can revisit that. Does that make sense? Okay. Number three, ordinance 2020-012, approving a special use permit for the co-location of cell antennas and associated equipment at 1500 South Seventh Street, Verizon Wireless. I'd entertain a motion, please. So moved?
Second.
Been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas, please.
This is a matter that went to the Plan Commission recently on February 5th, and Plan Commission recommended that you support the special use permit application, which is just to co- excuse me, co-locate a cell antenna, which will help those who are Verizon customers in the southern portion of the Calhoun, and the owner of the antenna, who's a different company altogether, supported it, and I appreciate the importance of the right to co-locate, and we recommend your support.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Move that we waive second reading and approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Morris, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That ordinance is approved. Now to reports and communications, item M on your agenda. City council member reports, one through seven. Alderman Carolyn Morris is our first ward alderman. Anything to report, please?
No report.
Alderman Fanouken, second ward.
Yeah, I know we had a discussion about the census earlier, but it's very important to the city and the county and to the state. Over the next month, you'll be getting a postcard that'll identify your connection to the US Census portal, and you'll have a specific code. When that comes, please make sure April 1 or soon thereafter is possible that you complete that form, indicating everybody that lives at that date in that residence, because it's so very important, whether or not they have been there a day, a month, they're two months old, or 102 years old, please have everybody register.
Thank you, Alderman Fanouken. Alderman Smith.
Basically, I'll be having a third ward meeting, hopefully Fire Station Number One in the very near future. I'll be announcing that on the next council meeting, the date in March.
Thank you. Alderman Perkins.
Big thanks to the city folks for all the efforts for putting out the fire Friday. That was quite a.
That was quite a, quite a deal. I know there's a lot of work that went into it. Thank you very much for the efforts.
Thank you, Greg. Alderman McAdams?
Just a gentle reminder that we're having that meeting on Saturday at 1:00 at Barb City Manor and I encourage everyone from the fifth ward to come out and, and to air their concerns and solutions.
Thank you. Alderman Verbig?
I've also, to Alderman Faver's comment, I've had a challenge attracting Ward Six residents and business owners to attend our ward meetings, so I've been walking the ward more, trying to get out and talk with people and businesses and recently walked Lucinda, Russell, and Crane in Ward Six. And topics ranged, everything from, "We need a new elementary school in Annie Glidden North." Barriers to transportation are really challenging for parents to be participating in their students' schools. All of the students in Annie Glidden North are bused. And just interesting to hear the perspective of children living in the same building but yet attending a different school. Again, not, you know, school district business, but again, this is, I'm just reporting what's coming up. Also, the suggestion to relocate Greek Row came up. So these two topics are, could be included in comprehensive planning that we certainly need to work on. That could include, again, joint meetings with the school board and other governing bodies to figure out what are the best uses of, of land and how do we address these important needs. And the third one was a heads up on people not using the crosswalk on Annie Glidden and 38. They're walking from, directly from the CVS parking lot to the Lincoln Tower parking lot without going up to the intersection. So they've asked me to see what we can do to try to help make that intersection safer.
Thank you, Mike. Alderman Faver?
As I mentioned, we will be having another ward meeting soon. I'll get with Lauren Hedge neighborhood and determine the best date for them and I'll let everyone know as soon as possible.
Thank you. And I appreciate all of the interfacing that our aldermen are having with your residents. I really appreciate it. I had the pleasure today of attending the swearing in of two police officers and one fireman for our departments. And at that time, I, I had indicated to, to those in attendance that it's been a tough few months for our DeKalb Police Department. And I wanted the three, the two new officers to hear what I've heard over the past several weeks, and that is, the majority of folks have full support of our police department, the men and women of that department. And, you know, we do hear comments one way or the other. A lot of the comments that we hear are given the notoriety in the media, et cetera, but believe me, I am so proud of our DeKalb Police Department for what they continue to do for the citizens of the city of DeKalb. And to echo your thoughts, Greg, I commend our fire department for, for their hard work this past weekend during the standard roofing fire down on, on South Seventh Street. The men and women of this city care so very, very much and when they're put to the test, whether that be on the streets of the city of DeKalb fighting crime or whether that be on the streets of Nor-, South Seventh, fighting a fire like standard roofing, we got to step up and be proud. So I would ask any resident, if you see a fireman, if you see a cop, give them thanks. Thank them for their service and thank them for, for what they're doing for the citizenry of the citizens of DeKalb. That is my report. City Clerk Fazikis, any report?
Yes, wanted to talk about Votera. We have elections coming up. Do you know, do you know if we have voter registration this week? Maybe you know, maybe you don't, you probably don't. In person? Online? What's going on?
The online is good through the end of the week?
Oh, no. Alderman McAdams, that's kind of rhetorical. Because what I really want to say is that you can go to this website that the DeKalb County Clerk has put together and find out all that stuff. So Alder McAdams could tell us tonight or I could tell you tonight. And, but you'd forget in a few minutes. So VoteraNow, V-O-T-E-R-A-now.com, although if you accidentally put org in it, you'll get there as well. And you can find out where your polling place is. You can find out what's going on with, where, where you can early vote next week. You can find out if your registration is good. And the latest thing is you can get your sample ballots now. That should all be, be up there. So tell, tell everybody voting is complicated nowadays. And the website is very user-friendly. It, and it has every, all the resources that you need a click away from that site.
Thank you, Lynn. City Manager Bill Nicholas, any report?
Yeah, just very quickly, Tom Cleveland, our longtime airport manager, announced his resignation to move on to DePage Airport about a month ago and we had hoped to present Tom with his plaque and to officially thank him for his years of work since 2001 in behalf of the airport. But Tom was ill tonight and could not attend, so he sends his regards to you and his thanks for your support over the years. There is an airport advisory board tomorrow night and if he can make that, we'll appropriately thank him there. Thank you in behalf of Tom.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else with any kind of a report? I was really impressed when I asked our city manager this afternoon, what's the, what's, what's the forecast for the snow? And he said, "You know, our Public Works Director, Andy Rye, had the perfect answer. We're going to have somewhere between 1 and 20 inches." And I like, I like that forecast. I, I do understand that we may get a little bit less than what we were talking about yesterday, so we'll see. But regardless of how much snow we will get, our Public Works Department will be out there, they'll be plowing the streets and they'll be doing one heck of a job, I'm sure. Okay, with that, there is no executive session scheduled tonight. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Verbig, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.